... to the Pittsburgh City Council meeting. Counselor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call him, Madam Clerk.
President Kuchmare.
Present.
Counselor Bean. Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Beazall.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor DiNatali.
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Catty.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda to which you are speaking. Good evening.
My name is Calvin Brooks. I am the treasurer-collector for the city of Pittsburgh, and I'm speaking on orders number 229-16 through 236-16 in tonight's meeting. These are all orders to sell property through the side yard sales committee. These properties have come up to the council earlier in the year, which time they were declared access and referred to the side yard sales committee for disposition. The committee has contacted the abutters, and in each of these eight cases, an abutter has come forward and applied for the property. The committee has reviewed the applications and recommended sale of these properties to the abutters who did apply for it. In your package, you have copies of the orders and a copy of what the deed would look like. And I guess I would ask if you would be willing to act on it tonight.
Motion to suspend the rules on 229-16 through 236-16.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 229-16 up through and including 236-16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's granted, the motion.
Motion to approve 229-16 through 236-16.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 229 up to and including 236-16. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
Just as being the property committee representative on the side yard sales committee, we do get represented on these sales through the representation of the property chairman. So, I was in on these, and then we did have some that we had hearings on that'll come before us later, but the process is working, and these properties are going back to the people that could actually take care of them. So, I think this is going to be a great thing to move forward with.
I have a motion and second to accept 229 up to and including 236-16. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will hear a report from the committee on records. Counselor Donnelly? Counselor Donnelly, could you please provide a report from the committee on records?
We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the committee on records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. I have three letters this evening of appointment, all to the disability commissions, with terms to expire February 1st, 2019, for the following three individuals: Ms. Kathleen Hamelin, Attorney Nicholas Carbone, and Ms. Carolyn Quirk. Those will be sent to the appointments committee. Next move to reports, annual reports, 225-15 annual reports, city of Pittsburgh auditors reports dated June 30th, 2016.
Move the report be placed on file with the city clerk?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 225-15 to be placed on file with the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous. Report from the committees, city property committee, Counselor Joseph.
City property committee met at 6:00 this evening. There was three members present. The items on the agenda, 216-16 Calvin Brooks, city treasurer, to declare as access and designate the following properties to the side yard sales program, 768 Water Street, 65 Minneapolis Avenue, Garnett Street. This was approved 3 to the 0. 218-16 Scott Ellis Airport Manager to authorize His Honor Mayor Stephen DiNatali to execute a utility easement for 567 Crawford Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. This was also approved 3 to 0.
Motion to accept the city property committee?
I have a motion and second to accept the city property committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Finance committee, Counselor DiNatali.
Thank you. Finance met last Tuesday, September 13th, and 195-16 was held in committee for further discussion. 206-16 Counselors Bean, Boishman, Green, Beazall, and Clark to restore the option to allow the city council members to participate in health care benefits. That was denied. 210-16, the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY17 State 911 Department Support and Incentive Grant in the approximate amount of $115,227 for the purposes of said grant. That was adopted. 211-16 ordered that the city of Pittsburgh approves the expenditure of funds from the Federal Department of Justice, Office of the Justice Programs, the FY17 Local JAG Award, LLEBG20, and the approximate amount of $28,415 for the purposes of said grant. That was adopted.
Motion to accept the finance committee report?
Second.
Motion and second to accept the finance committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous. Legislative Affairs Committee oral report. The committee met earlier this evening. There was one item on the agenda, 219-16 Vincent P. Pousatary, the second Esquire, to enact Chapter 72, Article 3, Section 6-9 of the city of Pittsburgh ordinance entitled "Stretch Energy Code as Outlined in the Enclosed Ordinance," that passed by a vote of 4 to 0.
Make the motion to accept Legislative Affairs Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous, the motion carries. 214-16 Mobility LLC to install backhaul transport equipment on a proposed utility pole in the right-of-way located north of the intersection of John Fitch Highway and Summer Street as outlined in the enclosed petition. Declare the hearing open. I'd like to ask the person representing the petition to please step forward. Please be seated at the center table. If you could identify yourself by name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James George. I am the New England Permitting Manager for Mobility LLC, and I actually have two applications on the table, on the agenda this evening, 214-16 and 215-16. So, my presentation will basically bind those together. I can do this in less than five minutes, okay? Essentially, this is what the notion is here. Mobility is a wireless infrastructure builder. They build cell towers, they do DAS, they do small cell. They are a national company. We have a subtenant Sprint PCS, and we are doing this for 70,000 to 80,000 sites throughout the country for them, and essentially, this is the model. This is the notion that they have come up with. The word densification is a big word in the wireless industry now. The, I have been zoning wireless things for close to two decades. I've built an awful lot of towers, put a lot of things on rooftops. Pittsburgh currently has wireless coverage, all the way up to 3G, 4G, and even approaching 5G. The problem with the current wireless coverage is they can't turn it up anymore. No matter how much they upgrade it, they can't turn it up. They are regulated on how much they turn up. What does that mean? Densification means a given area, in a number of meters, not miles, where it is tight population or heavy, heavy traffic flow or heavy big box, a lot of customers, a tremendous amount of customers in a very given defined area trying to find Pokemon, or downloading movies, or the need for bandwidth is insatiable. Okay. That said, we have certain pockets along the way. Two of them, we've identified in Pittsburgh. The notion to cover the pockets, we're on the towers, we're on the rooftops, we're propagating. We want to cover Hannafords and the Big K and that small area right in there. We want to cover these certain areas, Pittsburgh state, the certain areas that we need to cover because the need for bandwidth over exceeds the current coverage. This is a right-of-way project. The notion that they came up with, mobility, is they became a CELEC in Massachusetts and throughout the 50 states. A CELEC is a competitive local exchange carrier that essentially, by regulation, gives mobility, that CELEC designation, which allows them in the right-of-way space, the same as the utility poles, the Verizon's and the EnGrid's. The utility poles are in that right-of-way space. You've got the street, the curb, the sidewalk, and the private land. In that right-of-way space is where we seek to place this facility. We are looking to plant a wooden pole. We buy our wooden poles at the same place that the utilities buy their wooden poles, a wooden pole or a steel pole, some kind of decorative pole, whatever is workable and zonable for that particular location, plant it in the right-of-way with no ground space. That gives us the elevation that we desire. We own the pole, we pay down to the landlord, which will be the city and the community, and we have the Sprint small cell equipment on the top of the pole and the side of the pole. That gives us the opportunity to put small cell equipment where we need it to be, because the right-of-ways are sort of all over the place, and beam into the area that we desire. All right. All that said, we have two locations in the city of Pittsburgh. Just to give everybody an education on where they are, I mean, you know your city, John Fitch Highway and Summer Street. That is down by, the railroad goes by, Railroad Bridge, you've got the Cat Plaza and the Credit Union right there, and the 99's a little bit around the corner. Okay, so you're familiar with that area. That area has been identified as a densification need. So, we are looking to identify that right-of-way in front of that, pretty much in front of the, is it a fire station? Was that what it was? Fire station and down by that railroad station, where the railroad crosses, plant a pole and put our equipment on the pole. The second location would be Wayland and Pierce Avenue. That's right. That covers the Route 2 Cloverleaf coming off and the Twin City Plaza where the Big K and Hannafords is down there. That is a significant need, a lot of Pokemon running around, and that's a legitimate story. Pokemon really upset the wireless industry. They were not expecting Mr. Pokemon to run away. So, if I gave you an overview of what we anticipate doing, this is, let me just further what I expect, or the way that Massachusetts is trending. This has just started in July of this year, this project. So, everybody in the country is working their way through the process of permitting and zoning. We have built certain sites in certain geographic areas of the country. In Massachusetts, I personally and my other colleagues are working their way through the processes, and we're looking for an approval and a process from you tonight on how we can get this thing done. The way it's trending is, we advanced a proposal for the petition for grant of location because we are a utility, and so that was the vehicle that we decided to advance into the hearings. And here I sit. Oftentimes, the committee, or selectmen or council, put me down into a subcommittee to do the work, to figure out what we're going to do here. They downed it into a subcommittee. That has happened. Oftentimes, they dump it into planning and zoning or zoning board of appeals. I acknowledge that process, but the next thing I'm going to say is there is an agreement between the applicant and the jurisdiction, because that dirt of the right-of-way space is essentially public property owned by the city, as long as it's not on a DOT property. So, there is a franchise agreement which requires an annual payment to the jurisdiction for us to utilize this much of your right-of-way space for me to plant my pole. That gains me, whatever you want to call, that gains me land control. Once I have land control, if there is a process by which I need to get into planning because there is a wireless element to this, and there could be a height variance to this depending on what we decide, then that's the way that proceeds. So, those are the, that's the trending that I have seen in front of the bodies of major jurisdictions in Massachusetts. This is a unique wireless model. No one else is doing it. There is small cell out there. Someone had a notion when the towers were not covering everything, the density areas of the downtowns, and you couldn't build any more towers that were zonable in any given community. They had the notion to go on the existing utility poles that were owned by EnGrid and Verizon and/or Verizon. We have a master license agreement with those folks as well, and that is an option for me. But this particular model of going through the process to become a CELEC, which places me in the same swimming pool as those guys, and I can work within this space, wireless carriers can't, other tower developers unless they're a CELEC can't. Uniquely, we like to own the pole, control it. If a drunk drives into it and breaks it, we fix it, and that's the way that goes. It's typical in the sense that we receive wireless revenue from our subtenant, we pass down a portion of that revenue to the ground space, and we control the middle. And that's the model that these guys are trying to accomplish. So, those, that's my presentation. We have two locations. I seek from you tonight what the process would be for my next step based on those facts.
Sir, procedurally, because you've spoken to both locations, and we have two different items, I've opened a hearing for the first. I'm just going to open a hearing for the second so we can deal with both simultaneously. So, we also have this evening, 215-16 Mobility LLC to install backhaul transport equipment on a proposed utility pole in the right-of-way located south of the intersection of Wayland Street and Pierce Avenue as outlined in the enclosed petition. Declare the hearing open. So, sir, we'll now turn this over to counselors to ask questions of you. This is certainly the option for the council to approve or deny this evening. I would just say, I'm understanding that in the area of at least one, if not both of these, that there are potential city construction projects that may occur that the DPW, our Public Works Department, may not have taken into account of in that early stages of planning. So, I would just ask that potentially, if we could refer this to the Public Works Committee meeting for our Public Works Commissioners' insight before we move forward. I'm also understanding from our city solicitor that he has yet to be able to review the agreement that you've made reference to, and certainly, as a counselor and as a president, I'd feel more inclined to act on this one way or another, once our city solicitors have the ability to review the documents and weigh in properly to make sure that anything you're proposing is in line with city code and charter. That said, I have some other counselors looking to speak. Counselor Green?
My question to you this evening was, can you explain to me the definition of that CELEC or CECLC, what that stands for?
CELEC is an acronym for Competitive Local Exchange Carrier.
Okay.
And with that designation, it is issued by the state. It's different sort of contractually in each given 50 state, but in Massachusetts, it's given by the Telecommunication and Energy Commission, not the DUP. It is, it designates the applicant as a CELEC and provides the rights of that CELEC to the applicant, and that's, so Verizon or an EnGrid is classified as a CELEC, a utility. So, that's why I can say I am a CELEC, which is also defined as a public utility.
All right. And the fee that, or the monetary value that you pay for this right-of-way is what?
Well, that's an interesting question at this time. I don't really like to say a number into the record, but I'll give you a range. This is the way that I argue that. It's not the type of money that you may or may not be used to for the macro, big, heavy hitters, if you have a water tank or another land lease with a cell tower. I start this by saying, what does Verizon or EnGrid pay you for their right to be within the right-of-way space that they currently have? And that number is probably closer to zero. My number that I come up with, a range, a couple hundred dollars a month, we pay annually, so you're looking at 15, but sometime 1,500 dollars annually for the next 25, 30 years. It's not a lot of money per pole. So, another part to answer that question is, with a small cell on a utility pole, the FCC, in their wisdom and guidance, and there's a story behind that, it'll take about 15 seconds, as the industry transitioned from towers and rooftops and big macro to propagate, they went to the poles, the EnGrid's and the Verizon's. Verizon and EnGrid sort of took the position that it became the Wild West of pricing. Here they come, I can now gouge. That went on for a little while, and then all the carriers got together and said, "That is unacceptable to us." They lobbied the FCC. There was a variety of hearings. The FCC issued guidance on that to try to level off pricing, to take it out of the hands of the utility and give them an equation by what they can do. It's leveled off. Cable companies are paying the poles. Now, here comes wireless. Now, we're paying the poles. So, we are regulated on what we can charge our wireless small cell tenants. Therefore, your number cannot really go a lot more than that. So, that's my position on that one. It's not a lot of money, a couple thousand bucks annually each.
With you holding the land, the pole, the ownership of that, are you allowed to sublet to other small carriers who may want to jump on board?
I say yes to that. The pole itself is designed to hold at least, well, the one, depending, it's going to depend on height and what everybody can live with here. But we, our secondary tenants could be, we're looking, we have interest with the Internet of Things and the Smart City guys that allow small propagations to allow you to read meters remotely and that type of thing. So, yes, there is secondary revenue that can come into the pole. I can say that most likely, it's trending that you would look for a piece of that as well, or in some kind of revenue share. I'm not going to say no to that, but I'm not going to say yes to that either. So, yes, is the answer to that question.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Beazall?
Thank you. So, if you lease this piece of land and you put the pole up?
Yeah.
And let's say down the road, utilities come and say, "We need to move our poles," and they're going to go right through your pole. Like, how does that, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, how does that work? Even from the city side, if we had to upgrade the sidewalks and move the pole, do you, is it one of those things, I know that Unitso usually comes in here and says, "We need to move a pole, and this is where we need to move it to." How does that work with us, giving you that position? And what is usually the term lease on that?
That's a very, that's a very good question. Unlike a tower with a foundation design, this is more nimble in the sense of, I believe contractually, we have the right to move it if the circumstances arise that there is a municipal project around us, yes. We don't want to move it a half mile away, but we will move it, we will pull it out and put it somewhere else. So, that's a contractual obligation. I don't know if we would listen to a utility when they said, "Come and move it," because that's sort of a direct competitor in the sense of, "Well, no, we're here, you go over there." But for a city request, I can see us being nimble enough contractually to be able to pull it out and move it, yeah. Now, on the terms, as you suggested, that is a negotiating item, but generally speaking, I believe it's a 25-year term. I think it's broken up into the fives, like a first 10, and then some renewal terms on the fives, all the way up to 25 to 30 years. That's a negotiable item. So, it's a long-term play, similar to a wireless telecommunications facility.
Okay. And if we're, if you're moving that pole, you're paying the cost to move the poles, it wouldn't be up to the city to pay that cost to move the pole?
That is correct. I foresee no circumstance where the city is obligated to pay to move it, or to fix it, or to maintain it throughout the term. That's not, that's not, yeah, we would own the pole and own everything about it.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph?
Can you give me a little bit of a description of the pole and how it's anchored?
Yes. We have a few different designs, okay? The typical design is a wooden pole, exactly the same as a utility pole that you see. It's treated, it's the same pole, depending on the height. So, on the anchor piece, it's not a foundation design. I believe we put it in the ground the exact same way they do. We, this is not, I'm not a construction guy, but we dig a hole, we put the pole in the ground at whatever the level that is needed, and we refill it in and pack it in there. So, it is just as packed in as a utility pole. I believe there's some kind of a small foundation on the bottom which packs it in, but it's not cemented into the ground. The circumference is the exact same, that's for the wooden pole. Now, an interesting part of this is we have a steel pole. On the wooden pole, you will see all the equipment. There is an antenna on the top, three feet tall, a small round antenna. You have some coax coming down, and you have two, you have a couple of pieces of hardware that make the thing do what it does. Our utility bubble is going to be, I think it's 15 feet on the pole, so you will see the hardware going up on a wooden utility pole. Now, in these areas here, I understand the areas, I've seen them, you have steel poles with lights on them. We have that design. If I am in an area where I don't have wooden poles, and a wooden pole would not aesthetically be pleasing for that thing, we would use a steel pole upon confirmation. That, everything is on the inside, so you'll see the steel pole. It's the same circumference, actually. It's actually the same, it looks the same, and our equipment would be on top of it and would give you the light, and we'd maintain the light and pay for the light. A third one, and I don't see this in Pittsburgh, but we have decorative, in Boston, they have these black lights that are, okay, so we have designed something to be creative like that. It would get a little bit more higher, but I think we design for the given neighborhood. What's trending is the wooden pole in industrial slash commercial areas. If there's wooden poles everywhere else, we typically would go with a wooden pole. If it's a light, we'd put a light there. The difference is, we'd like to see it a little bit taller than the 35, 40, 50 feet, whatever it is, and would give you the light if you need it.
But I do believe most of the utility poles are either anchored by the wires that are on them or anchored with anchors. What's preventing this from falling over?
All right. From the foundation design, this is what we do. In advance of, in advance of being approved, this is, we have, we currently have what we call a zoning drawing, which is, which gives quite a bit of detail, okay? It doesn't give the foundation detail yet. If we can come up with, as this moves forward, if we come up with where this is going to be from a coordinate standpoint, is it going to be on the, is it going to be on the concrete sidewalk itself? Is it going to be in a grassy area? We survey the parcel or that given area, and we do a foundation design. So, that would be a new page on this. It's not so much a foundation, it's more of a hole. Dig it, stick it in, and repack it in. There's no guys, there's no guy wires to it, or that's not how it's kept up.
Okay.
Your concern is it's going to fall over.
Yeah.
I get that. I think, I think over the course, we certainly design putting it in the ground through construction and making sure that it doesn't fall over, that it's properly done.
How many poles do you currently support?
All right. That's an interesting question. We have a three-year project with Sprint. This pretty much ramped up in May. We have built some, several hundred, I would say. Nothing in Massachusetts. We're about to start construction on some in New York and Rhode Island. And I'm in Massachusetts, I was brought on in early August, so here these are. So, there's nothing in Massachusetts, yet.
How many poles do you have in the ground?
Throughout the country?
Yeah.
Less than 100.
Okay.
Here's my answer to that.
Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak with a gentleman before the meeting, and I looked at the maps. One is on the Summer Street Fire Station, and I believe it's on a John Fitch Highway. So, I believe that there are no poles, there are no utility wires on John Fitch. That was one of Counselor Foley's pet projects for many, many years. Everything's underground. So, there's some leeway there because it appears to be by the fire station. The other one is on Wayland Street by On the Run, so it's across from McDonald's. So, just to give you an idea, think about it, but I think it's a good idea to go to the committee and have whoever's going to negotiate there and represent from the legal department, the mayor's office, whoever else handles some of these things. But, we're moving ahead.
Counselor Boishman?
Maybe.
How high are these poles going to be?
All right. What is proposed right now is 75 feet.
75 feet?
Yes. That's what's proposed right now, what we would like to see. Not that that's going to be the end of the day, but that's what, that is what is proposed.
The reason why I asked this question, I look out my window, up in the quarries, and what do I have staring at me with a big blinking light?
and what do I have staring at me with a big blinking light? A pole, a giant pole. And it looks like hell. Sorry about that. To me, it looks like hell.
Is it a cellular tower?
No, it's for the fire station.
I see.
For they can broadcast. And I think it looks like heck. When I lived at my mother's house, and I looked up Oak Hill Road, the country club, I seen these big monsters up there in the sky, and I says, oh my God, we're ruining everything. That's my opinion.
Here's the thing, councillor. The way this is trending is, I don't get anything unless I ask for it, sir. So the way this is trending is, I feel as if we can go through the process and get through the process itself, this will come down. That'll come down from the 70-something feet. I would very much like to see more than the current poles. 35 isn't going to work for me, 40 isn't going to work for me. Somewhere, if we can belly around the 50 range, I think we can get that done, into the record.
All right. Now, let me ask you this. You're not going to put the pole in the middle of the sidewalk, are you?
No. We have regulations such as ADA and that type of thing. Generally speaking, the right-of-way, we try to choose an area that is not a tight little sidewalk like this, so I can't have my three feet both sides. In both of these circumstances, I believe that there is the curb, sidewalk, grassy area, so we're looking to not obstruct the ADA regulations of a sidewalk.
Now, you come in, we give you permission. Three years down the road, I think it's Councillor Green or Councillor Joseph or Mike said, we got construction going on down in the corner. Will you move your pole? Are you going to be like Verizon and say, when we're damn good and ready, we'll move that pole? And not until then, because that happened on Summer Street, remember? When they did the Summer Street over. They sat there for two years, poles, and we couldn't get them to move them. And once you guys get what you want, we don't hear from you until you want something from us, again.
Well, here's, okay, finish your thought. Okay. That is something that I'm hearing a lot of. I think that I am sort of in the soup of other people's fault is not my problem. However, I'm hearing things very similar to that about my utility colleagues staying with the double pole. You have a double pole problem? Everybody's got a double pole, all right. I think that it is in our best interest, because we have a wireless tenant, and we have a contractual relationship with the city, where the utilities really don't. Contractually, you can force some language in there on a red line, and I think we'd be way more receptive than my brothers in the utility industry, who are leaving double poles all over the place. Another thing that I'm doing in jurisdictions, and this is interesting, some are so angry at the utilities and the double pole matter, that they're basically saying, we'll give you one if you take out one of these damn things. Now, that's an interesting play, it really is. I'm looking into that, because it's sort of interesting to me, like, I'm not going to agree to that, but that's an interesting something that I can run up the street. I can't say that I'm going to do that for you guys, but it's just, it's interesting the way people are reacting to the N-Grids and the Verizons and the arrogance of saying. But what we will have that they don't have is a contractual relationship with the city that will, by language and contract, force us to act.
Okay. I got to go back to the height. The height's really...
Bugging you?
I'm not into heights. Is there going to be a light bulb on the tops of the airplanes? Because there's an airport right down the street.
No.
No light bulb?
No light bulbs.
So there's no blinking?
No. Our goal and intent is to get low to the ground, and beam it into our target, low, low. So 70 feet is the proposed. I don't get it unless I ask for it. But it's trending towards lower, but there's a place where I won't go on low. So I can put that into record now, is, I'll work with the jurisdiction on allowing for a lower height, if I can get what I'm asking for. I will work on aesthetics, if it's reasonable. And there's not much I can do on pricing. It is what it is. It is what it is. But that's the value to, I think that's a value to the community. Everybody asks, what's the value to my community? I am increasing bandwidth to your large box, high-density areas, like your colleges and your high schools. That's a value. Sometimes lights are a value. I need a light in that parking lot, right where that is, boom, get a light there. And revenue is what it is. It's not going to pay your salaries, but it is what it is. It's a revenue stream that you can budget over the course of the next long term. Those are my values that I'm bringing, in addition to what I'm trying to do for my client.
Which is Sprint?
My subtenant at the moment is Sprint, yes. But there are other interested parties. And it's trending towards the Internet of Things, guys. Google it. It's all smart city. If public safety has some kind of a unique gadget, I can get them on the pole. So that's another, you know, public safety, I would accommodate. But the Internet of Things, guys, they need a little whip, and they need a little box, and they propagate this low power, and there's a lot of stuff that is good for the city on that. If we do it right, you can read meters, you can track things, you can do all kinds of different things. So that is the way I think this is trending. We're doing it for Sprint, and the pole is what it is, especially if you bring me down to the 50 range. It's not like I can co-locate everybody on the thing, it is what it is. So I'll get my subtenant on there, and I'll have a secondary space for a lesser tenant. And then the pole is saturated, it's done. That particular pole.
Councillor Boishman, all set? Councillor, I know we have a few more councillors looking to speak. I'd just also add to my earlier comment, I certainly love to see our residents be able to take advantage of increased bandwidth and greater access to service. I just want to make sure we're doing this, and that we're taking in all of our city's assets into account, before we certainly make a decision on this, that we're consulting all the necessary entities within our city. So certainly Public Works, as I've mentioned, making sure our city solicitors had an opportunity to review your agreements. I realize there'll probably be some negotiations, you know, some language that goes back and forth, but certainly giving the city solicitor an opportunity to look at, you know, your at least initial agreements. But also, we do have an airport in our city. I'm not sure if you're aware.
I am.
It's in close proximity. My understanding and recollection is that there's a two-mile radius within the airport that will require a building permit over a certain foot, over a certain height. I'm not entirely positive what that height limit is. So certainly, you know, I'd also be looking for a communication to be sent to the Airport Commission, who also meets next week. So I think there's time to get these both on the agendas of both Public Works and our airport commissions for next week.
You have an airport commission? So it's a jurisdictionally-owned airport?
It falls under the jurisdiction of the FAA, as well as a local airport commission as well.
That's interesting, okay. I'm agreeable to that, because I feel if an FAA report of some kind is required, I would obviously be triggered to do that. So I'm comfortable with that, for sure.
Excellent. So certainly, we may have a mandated, because of the height limit that you're seeking, it may be mandated by the FAA, and they may also have some requirements. I'm not sure if a light is required, but certainly the Airport Commission, as well as the city solicitor and others, would be able to weigh in and look at what's required of us as a city in negotiating a contract with you. So before I resume to the speakers' list, I'd certainly be asking councillors to make those, for us to continue this hearing to October 4th, which is the first meeting in October, and allow for those commissions and those entities to certainly have the proper, necessary discussions before we fully entertain this. That said, Councillor Deena Tally, the floor is yours.
My only question is, is this market-driven? This is market-driven, right? This is market-driven? There's demand for this?
Yes, yes.
And just out of curiosity, what would happen if these poles were not installed? Would that impact those areas of density that, I'm trying to make the case more for you, because I'm in favor of this, I've just...
I understand your question. It's a very, very, very good question. I have options. Let's say you don't want it on your right-of-way, and you deny me. My next place to go would be to co-locate on an N-Grid or a Verizon pole in the area. That would be my next play. Another play that I'm doing, it depends on the dynamic of the jurisdiction, is you've got the right-of-way space, I can go 12 feet, I mean, I can go 12 inches from your right-of-way space on private property and give him my 1,500 bucks a year. So I can plant a wooden pole on private property and go through your permitting process, whatever height variance. So those are my three options. I need to, it is driven for me to find a solution to do this for my client. So my solutions are threefold. Work with the community, work with the jurisdiction, give them my money, do an attachment agreement with these N-Star guys, which is not attractive to me, because it's not attractive to me, we want to own it. And third, go to the private guy.
If you were to do an attachment agreement, because you were denied this option, it sounds to me like that would not assuage some of the concerns stated earlier about the big utility companies, because in order to move a pole, or to do something with that pole that you fixed your product onto, we would have to go through them, not you guys, as opposed to if you owned your own pole and you had a contract with the city.
That is exactly correct. It would no longer be my decision to move that pole. It would be their decision to move it, or not move it, or delay you. I would have very little say in that.
And I'm not opposed to 75 feet, because I pretend, I don't want to pretend that I'm a subject matter expert in every single thing in this world. I would assume there is a reason, a technological and engineering reason why it's 75 feet, preferably. And if that is what it demands, that is what it is, as long as it's within regulations. I mean, I know we have an airport nearby, but I'll tell you, if there's a plane flying 75 feet along John Fitch Highway, we got a big problem.
A bigger problem.
So I just, when these things come up, I hope we go through the process, and it goes through very seamlessly, because Pittsburgh is a place that it doesn't behoove us to turn these things away and anger clients. We're thirsting for stuff like this. So I hope it goes through very, very swimmingly, and the people who are experts at this are making the decisions, not people who think they're experts. Thank you.
Councillor, I'd just reiterate, both those commissions that I've requested are both meeting within the next week. So certainly, not looking to extend this for months on end, but, you know, we have some avenues available immediately. Councillors, the city solicitor has to be at the planning board this evening as well. He's double-booked. Before I excuse him from this meeting, are there any legislative or legal questions for the attorney before we resume to the speakers' list? Thank you, Mr. City Solicitor.
Can we move to continue these to October 4th?
Councillor, are you comfortable with that? Okay. I have a motion and second to continue until October 4th, and send to the Public Works Committee, the city solicitor, and the Airport Commission.
If I were to forward the agreement, can it go through Anna to you, or would you like it directly? Okay, Anna, I have your contact information. I have to order the template a couple of days, if that's all right?
Absolutely, sir.
Very good.
I have a motion and second to continue, 214 and 21516, to our October 4th city council meeting. Speaking to the motion, Councillor Beazell?
Is there any way that you can forward the city clerks some addresses where the poles already exist in communities, so that if we have any questions about what the height looks like, the size, or whatever, we could drive and see them?
Well, there's nothing in Massachusetts. It would be a long drive. What I can forward is engineering drawings, and photo simulations, and visuals for you. That's one thing that I can do. And I can forward them to Ms. Farrell.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you need me to attend one of your subcommittee hearings? Would that be helpful?
I think, we'll send you the information, the dates, and the locations, and that'd probably be helpful. I have a motion and second to send 214 and 1516, or to continue to October 4th, and send it to the Public Works Committee, the city solicitor, and the Airport Commission. All those in favor? All those opposed? We continue.
Sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Solicitor.
Mr. President, thank you.
Next on the agenda, orders, finance.
Are you going to send the finance?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 22616 up to and including 22816 to finance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Is unanimous? Petitions?
I'll send 237 up to and including 239 to their respective committees.
Second.
Councillors, can I just ask for order until we conclude this meeting in just a few moments? I have a motion and second to send 23716 up to and including 23916 to their respective committees. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? All those opposed? It is unanimous. I have a motion and second to adjourn. We have an announcement. Mr. Mayor?
Please, I... With a little public service announcement, Veterans Department is looking for Pittsburgh Vietnam Vets to recognize during the city's Veterans Day Ceremony commemoration. Those are veterans who enlisted between the years of 1955 and 1975. Please contact our Veterans Commissioner, Michelle Marino. She's at 978-829-1797. Also, October 12th is the Holiday Decorating Committee. They'll be holding a pasta dinner fundraiser to help raise funds to decorate the Upper Common with holiday lights, $5 a ticket, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Tickets can be bought at the senior center, City Hall, or the Historical Society. Please, all councillors, if you would, please attend. Bring family members, bring as many people as you can. We need that money. One Lane Main Street implementation begins tonight, ladies and gentlemen. So good luck, good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to add a thank you to FATV, who has set up audio so that those in attendance and those at home can hear us better than we've previously had before. So our gratitude from the council to FATV for doing that, and I hope we get some feedback from the public, if there are concerns, or this is not preferable, that we hear that back from them, so we can adjust accordingly. Thank you, councillors. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.